Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start the Canton Township Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting on January 14, 2025 at 6:09 PM. First, we'll have a motion to make Diane Slavens, Treasurer Slavens, the clerk for the day, clerk for to open the meeting?
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion to appoint Diane Slavens as temporary clerk. Support.
Motion made by Trustee Foster, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Please take roll call. Oh, that's right, Pledge of Legions. Let's start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. By the United States of America.
Thank you. Can you please take roll call?
Absolutely.
Anya?
Ganguli, I'm sorry. Good evening. Oh, sorry. Foster.
Good evening.
Seacrest is not here, but he will be here shortly. Supervisor Hudak.
Here, good evening.
Slavens is here. Berninski.
Good evening.
And Sari.
Good evening.
Thank you. The first order is to go into closed session. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes. Madam Supervisor, I move that we move into closed session under MCL 15.268EE to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, Battistone versus Canton Township. Support.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Trustee Foster. Can we have a roll call by everyone, please?
Ganguli.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Hudak.
Aye.
Slavens. And Sari.
Aye.
Okay, we will go into closed session.
Berninski.
Aye.
Sorry. Thank you. All right, we're going to go into closed session. You'll work out the technical difficulties while we're in there. All right, thank you. Thank you.
People.
Thank you. Time today. Give me a hard time today.
Fancy report. Very fancy. Color and it has graphs in it.
Yeah, I have that, but I don't have the general calendar. Just not coming up. Oh, well, I mean, I can read from the agenda. I just... Oh.
Oh, now it's better. Yeah. It wasn't working like that before.
I know. There we go. Did you come up with that, Diane? Okay, you're in the same view then. Thank you. Okay, can we have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. So we're going to the YAC group is not here yet, so we're going to go on to... Do we have any board or commission reports?
Table that.
Yep, we will table that for the YAC group. Now, public comment on agenda items only. Public comment on agenda items only. We will not be on Zoom today, just to let everybody know. That was not working. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the notice that when the YAC group comes in, we will go to them? But right now, we will table that section of the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda as presented, however, allowing for the floating of board and commission reports.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes.
Oh, and adding...
Yes, and add this.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to revisit the motion. Oh.
Call G zero.
Would the board be comfortable if we just did a friendly amendment to that motion, adding item G zero, consideration of board action on attorney recommendation regarding pending litigation, Christopher Battistone v. Canton Township Fire Department?
Support.
Thank you.
Motion made by Trustee Ganguli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, so now we have a public comment on agenda items only. Anyone here for agenda items only for three minutes?
Hi, my name is Charles Hudson. I live at 2022 Elmer Street. I'm just here in support of the amendment on the nonconforming lots. That's pretty much why I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Jim Castillo, reside at 1015 North Ridge Road. And as I've expressed previously in master plan presentation and comment sections, as well as in communications directly with the board, I'm here to suggest that the board not release a draft of the master plan that includes the designation of a neighborhood node at Ford Road and Beck and/or Ford Road and Ridge. This, in my view, would open the prospect for commercial uses to be established in the vicinity of this intersection and potentially expand into strip commercial. Without delving into the draft plan's conflicting criteria for them, the neighborhood node mixed-use concept is not well-established in suburban settings and is, to the best of my knowledge, legally untested in its ability to prevent more commercial land uses from proliferating along adjoining vacant frontages, thereby, over time, setting up the possibility of new commercial land uses being permitted or granted by court orders from the west of Canton Center to Beck and beyond. Let me be clear, I am not against the neighborhood node concepts. I believe that it is... We already have some neighborhood nodes, in a sense, here in Canton, whether you consider Cherry Hill Village to be in its mixed uses to be a neighborhood node, or the southwest corner of Canton Center with the Traditions condominiums and the Kroger market in close proximity. But I just don't think they should be applied at this revision of the master plan at Ford and Beck, nor at Ford and Ridge. The Canton community has committed millions of its tax dollars toward mitigating the accidents and reducing the congestion that have resulted from the strip commercial that exists on Ford Road in the eastern half of the township. I believe it is unwise to adopt a master plan that includes any prospect for such undesired land use activity from being replicated in the western portion of this roadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? All right, thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes from December 10, 17, 2024, and January 7, 2025.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the... Or board approve the minutes from December 10 and 17, 2024, and January 7, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Ansari. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Now, the Treasurers' reports and payments of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, support by Trustee Foster. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt a consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of an agreement with Wayne County to provide winter maintenance on 9.28 miles or 18.21 lane miles of county roads for the 2024-2025 winter season. C2, consider second reading of amendment to Appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances for nonconforming lots. C3, consider approval of 2025 meeting dates for Canton's Youth Advisory Council. C4, consider approval of the annual maintenance and technical support agreement for Vertosoft slash OpenGov asset management software. C5, consider payment of CityView annual software maintenance fee. Z, plural. C6, consider renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services, Civic Optimize and AMMS. And finally, item C7, consider approval of actuarial valuation of the Charter Township of Canton retiree healthcare plan.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. The general calendar. Item G zero, consideration of board action on attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation, Christopher Battistone versus Canton Township Fire Department.
Unclear through the minutes module how to do add-on RBAs. This is the first time we've done this. And I was promised by Civic Plus we could do it, yet we had no training on it. So let's just get crazy here. Oh, I know where I'll put it. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attorney's settlement recommendation in the case of Christopher Battistone v. Canton Township Fire Department and authorize the township supervisor to sign all the necessary documents to effectuate the recommendation.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Treasurer Slavens. I'm sorry.
I actually would like to ask a question.
Okay.
Solely for the purpose of being able to do the minutes, because I don't like the awkward silence after we all vote on something while I'm finishing it. So my question is... I actually don't have one, sorry.
Sir, just to let you know, in the consent calendar, we did approve it. I know. You probably don't want to sit here the whole meeting. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. The item G zero... I'm sorry, G1. Consider approval to distribute the draft master plan, Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a comprehensive community master plan for public comment for 63 days in compliance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA 33 of 2008. And then, yeah, if I could just... We will have a little presentation before also, but can I have a motion, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the distribution of the draft master plan document, Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a comprehensive community master plan in compliance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA 33 of 2008, for a period of 63 days.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Foster. In 2021, the Canton Planning Commission reviewed the 2017... Oh, I'm sorry, executive summary. Pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA 33 of 2008, after preparing a proposed master plan, the Planning Commission shall submit the draft plan to the legislative body for review and comment. After comments, the legislative body shall approve the distribution of the proposed master plan for review and comment to adjacent communities, county planning commission, public utility committees, railroad companies, public transportation agencies, and the public at large. Public comments on the proposed master plan may be submitted to the Planning Commission for a period of 63 days, January 15, 2025 to March 19, 2025. So in 2021, I just read a little bit more. The Canton Planning Commission reviewed the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. In accordance with the plan, Michigan Enabling Act is amended and determined that update to the master plan was needed. To assist the Planning Commission and Planning Services Division McKenna, a private planning consultant firm based in Northville, Michigan, was contracted to assist in the development and design of a new master plan that would reflect advancements in transit technologies, consider alternate and attainable residential types amid the housing crisis, further preservation efforts of natural areas, incorporate stormwater management techniques and green infrastructure, and utilize best planning practices for future land uses. The draft master plan, which we're about to get a presentation of, an overview, Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a Comprehensive Community Master Plan, is intended to be a guiding policy document for the next five to 20 years. Proposed goals, objectives, ideas, and concepts designed to address the concerns of the community while also preserving and maintaining the elements that make Canton a desirable place to live, work, and play. So would you like to do your presentation?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not able to join the virtual meeting, so it's not coming up on the TVs.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we are not via Zoom. It's just basically on the screens if you want to.
I would just have to go up there?
Yes.
I can do that.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, we can do Zoom. For some reason, it wouldn't pick up the cable.
Huh.
Yeah. And so what you can do also afterwards is probably give them a copy, and they will just insert it in.
Yep, and I can put it... We can put it on the website as well. I apologize.
Who are those kids? Erin, who are they?
Those are my kids.
What are their names?
Henry's my boy, and Clara's my daughter. That was Christmas morning. She found the pickle in the... Are you up to look at them?
It's perfect. That's all right, we're the only ones that can see it.
Well, they are cute kids, so...
They are.
They are.
Yeah. At your house, did you actually have a plan on your wall? Is that what I saw in the background?
Yeah, we do have a big giant picture map of the Detroit metro area from like 1980-something or other. My husband and I are big map people, so we've got a couple of different ones and things that we've gotten at sales over the years.
Very cool.
We're very nerdy. Okay, so, hello, everybody. So this evening, we are asking the Township Board to begin the formal adoption process for the master plan. Now, as Supervisor noted, the undertaking of this project really began in 2021, and per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, the Planning Commission looked at the current master plan, which was adopted in 2018, and determined that not only was an update needed, but a rewrite was needed. There was a lot of things that we wanted to accomplish in the future of Canton related to sustainability, housing, and those things were not addressed in the current plan. So we decided to overhaul the entire project or the entire master plan. We contracted with McKenna Associates based out of Northville, and they've been instrumental in this project, helping the Planning Services Division and the Planning Commission through this project. So just quickly, as we've gone through a couple of times, the master plan adoption process is multifaceted. So this is not a meeting to adopt the master plan, rather, this is the step in which the Township Board will authorize the distribution of the master plan to the public for a period of 63 days for any public comment. This will allow outside agencies, the county, MDOT, and adjacent communities, and the public at large to read about the future of their home community and decide what they want to do, or decide if they... Provide any comments on if they like our ideas, or if they have anything that they would like to address. Hopefully, we hear nothing but great comments and rave reviews. That's what we want to hear. So currently, we are at step seven, which is the Planning Commission shall make the recommendation to the Township Board to distribute the master plan. So as you can see, there are still many steps that need to take place, including a public hearing with the Planning Commission, so we are not adopting anything today that will hopefully come in April, and we'll go through some timeline dates in the future. But just a brief summary for the public, just some public engagement that we did. So we had the comment boards that were set up at Township facilities. We had comment boards at community events, and between those two strategies, we collected over 1,200 comments from the public. We created a community survey where we received over 1,300 responses from members of the community. We had 16 different stakeholder groups that were set up, and they were separated into two different categories. There were community and sub-area groups, speaking with groups such as the Senior Council, the Youth Advisory Council, the DDA, areas of the community such as northwest Canton, where we have a lot of passionate residents who have ideas on the future of their community. And they were also topic-based. So we wanted to talk to residents about what are your thoughts about housing? What are your thoughts about the commercial corridors? What are your thoughts about environmental preservation? And so we were able to streamline and gear those questions and those discussions either by where the group that they're affiliated with or a topic specifically. And they were wildly successful with an average of 10 attendees per meeting, with several people attending multiple sessions. So I got to learn a lot of friendly faces over the time. And then we had two open houses. Approximately attendees were about 150 to 200 people. So as you can see, there were lines, there were stickers, there was a lot of interest and a lot of people coming in and out of the open houses, and we got to talk to a lot of really wonderful people. We had created a master plan advisory board that was consist of three members of the Township Board, members of the Planning Commission, members of the zoning board of appeals, the DDA, and several residents at large. And they held 12 meetings, including one joint meeting with the Planning Commission and Township Board to discuss Cherry Hill Village specifically, and then one unofficial kickoff meet and greet. There were 15 members, and all of them were wonderful contributors to the project in giving us a lot of ideas and feedback, and we really grateful for everything that they provided to us. We had all of our... A lot of our updates were provided in the focus, so anybody who was interested in the project could really see it come to fruition and really see the path that we were taking and a lot of the topics that we were discussing. And then we had an entire website that was devoted to the master plan projects, not only what we were talking about, what we were doing, the summary talking points from the master plan advisory boards, but also the overall master plan process, why we have a master plan, why it's important, how it's going to impact everyone's lives. So from all of the public engagement, the meetings, the meetings with the Planning Commission, the discussions, workshops, et cetera, we have drafted the Canton's Vision for Tomorrow, a Comprehensive Community Master Plan. It is wonderful. I am exceedingly proud of all of the work that we've done for this project and really excited for a lot of the ideas that have really come from members of the public and what they want to see. So the adoption timeline, on December 2, the Planning Commission reviewed the master plan in its entirety with a recommendation to the Township Board to distribute to the public. Today, January 14, we're hoping that the Township Board will authorize the distribution of the master plan for 63 days. We have a number of ways that we are publicly advertising this, where we've got a press release set up to go out. We have comment boxes, we have email blasts that are set to go out. So we really want to make sure that as many people know about the master plan, that we're really letting them know, hey, it's available, it's ready. Please read it, please provide your comments to us. So just because they haven't shown up in person to hear about it doesn't mean that they're not interested, because we have heard a lot of emails and phone calls of people interested in this, and so they're really excited to see what we've been working on over the past couple of years. So once the master plan has been... All the comments have been received after the 63 days. We will present all of those comments to the Planning Commission and have discussions on what we've heard throughout that. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, make a recommendation to adoption, and then the Township Board has decided to be the authorizing adopting body for the master plan. So we're hoping with this timeline to be adopting the plan April, May of this year. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you so much for your time.
So as Erin said, we have... They've done... I mean, she gave you some of the numbers, but I asked her for like a list of stats just to let everyone know. So public comments received, over 1,200. Comment boards at Township facilities, 802. Comments from community events, 416. Community survey responses, over 1,300. Stakeholder discussions, 16. Community groups, subgroups, 10. Topics, 6. Average number of attendees, 10, as she said. Open houses, 2, with approximately 150 to 200 people there. MPAD meetings, 12 meetings, including joint meetings with the Commission and the Township Board. 15 members meetings with the Township Board or joint meetings. And of course, as you said, you know, all of this was... It's been in the focus, and so we've been distributing on the website. So a lot of really great work has been going into this. So as you also heard, there were some, you know, comments. Mr. Castillo asked that we take something out. However, it's important that we hear the community, and it's okay if they don't agree with certain things. That's what we're looking, you know, for input. So, Amara, you had some questions?
Yeah, I really appreciate you sharing all this information with us, Erin. My question is, what, in your opinion, is the best way for residents and/or businesses or business owners to provide that public comment within the next 63 days?
So, yes, thank you. So the draft master plan will be available on our website for anyone to see. We do have hard copies that are available at the Planning Services counter if someone would prefer a hard copy. They can... The directions to... Of how to submit those emails or submit... Excuse me, submit those comments will be available on the website. So it's masterplan@cantonmi.gov would be the email address. You can also mail any comments that you would like to send to us via traditional mail to the Planning Services Division. And then, just to make sure that we have checked any avenue of how people want to communicate to us, we will also have a comment box and comment cards at the Planning Services counter. So if someone's looking at it or doesn't want to mail it in, or doesn't want to email or anything, we have provided that opportunity as well. So we'll have those three methods of communicating your comments to us throughout this process.
Can I confirm that's masterplan@cantonmi.gov? Okay, thanks.
No, it should be. I'm looking at our website. We should probably see about putting it on the front page.
It is. We're doing our overhaul tomorrow, first thing in the morning. Yep.
Okay, good. Okay.
Just hadn't... We didn't want to get too far ahead and say it's ready when, if there was any questions or concerns from the board, we didn't want to get ahead of the distribution.
Thank you. Did you have any more questions, Amara? No? Kate?
Yeah, just comments. Thank you for all the hard work on this and for everyone that worked on it. I was part of the committee, and first of all, it's nice to see you again. I kind of miss those meetings, but I'm proud of the work we did, and I think this master plan is fabulous.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work, both you, your team, and also the residents. I think this is probably the most involved master plan that the township has had, so good job. Thank you.
Just comments, no questions. I've asked a lot of questions.
I've asked a lot of questions about this plan over the last several months. But no, seriously, thank you, Erin and Patrick, for your work in helping the community and the Planning Commission and the Master Plan Advisory Board put together what I think is an incredible document. As Diane mentioned, I don't think we've ever seen a master plan in this community that's had so much public input going into the public comment period. So that's really great to see. I know Mr. Castillo has some concerns. I assure the community and anyone who's paying attention that we had a lot of conversations at the Planning Commission level about neighborhood nodes and weighing cost and benefit to putting those into the master plan. Happy to talk to anyone about it. And I'm sure Erin and Patrick, you are as well and can provide some context there. But yeah, just thank you for what I think is a great document and is a really great roadmap for Canton's future.
Anya?
Yeah, so I really, really enjoyed the steps that you took, like, you know, it was very comprehensive in getting this to finally to the public, the feedback that you requested. And I was aware on a personal level, because my daughter was part of the Master Plan Advisory Board as a citizen at large. And so I think that this would be a great opportunity for the community to come out and, you know, comment on this, because we are going to see some interesting changes in the, like, you know, as we build the Cherry Hill Village or transit or other things that we are going to discuss in the future. It's a good opportunity for the community to discuss this. Just having a request that if you can just mention the ways the public can comment or where is it available? If we can have that, as the Board can get an email on those details from anybody, from the planning group or from the supervisor's office, that, you know, we also start circulating to the community saying, hey, this is available. You have 63 days. You can comment on it, take a look at it. It's a great plan, but we want your feedback on it.
Michael, did you want to say something?
Yeah. So I guess my question would be in line with the public comments by former Township planner, Jim Castillo. I do know that nodes, I think, made their way into Troy's master plan last year in their Troy 2040. And they have a different title than ours for their master plan. But I know that they were very intentional about putting nodes in there. And I think the standards seem very similar to what we've kind of put here. And it appears that our intentions are kind of the same, that, you know, we like the idea of having mixed use in community shopping within a 10 to 15-minute walk from somebody's front door. And that that is inconsistent with most people's experience in Canton and our concern about the long-term future of Canton Township, when that is something that people want as opposed to the township that was planned decades ago. So the comment or the concern today was brought up about potential legal protections against runaway development. Because it was abundantly clear, I think, throughout all of our processes, from the start to today, that nobody wanted to see, like, strip malls or a recreation of Ford Road anywhere else. So can you speak a little bit to the constraints that we have put in place into the nodes that would allow us to have some selectivity when it comes to deciding what kind of shopping or commercial or office or residential goes in there? Because it does seem like we've done something similar with Cherry Hill Village, very intentionally, and we haven't seen those fears realized. But what do you say to that?
Yeah, so it's a great question. And I've spoken with Mr. Castillo several times and today as well. So we will continue to have conversations with him and talking him about his concerns, especially about the Ford and Beck intersection. So the intent of wanting to do these nodes is, or his concerns really, is making sure things don't extend beyond the demarcation in the future land use map just west of Beck Road, or, I'm sorry, just west of Canton Center on Ford Road. We have built into the language in the master plan. Now, that's a guiding policy document, so it's not legally enforceable in that sense. So we have put into the master plan that we want to do these nodes at these intersections, the possibility of 1,000 feet from the intersection itself, so it gives a little bit of leeway on either end, especially if it's a difficult intersection such as Ford and Beck. And we have included in the draft master plan text types of land uses that we do not want. So we have included, we do not want big box stores. We do not want auto-centric uses such as gas stations or drive-through restaurants. We have indicated that we want the small neighborhood types of establishments without naming certain types of retail or small-scale restaurants that we've heard in our public comments, but I don't want to put them on out right now. But gearing more towards that. In addition to the master plan, we are also currently in the process of drafting ordinance language related to these nodes. So that way, we have control and regulatory language for the size, the scale, the scope, the uses that's more enforceable and more legally binding than just the master plan. So those things are going, are currently being drafted and are going to be brought to the Planning Commission, the Township Board, probably in a joint meeting at some point to make sure that those, that these ideas do not extend beyond the idea and the concept that we have in the master plan. So the zoning language will come forth after, are going to be, are in the process of being drafted. And those will be the regulatory benchmarks to prevent anything from going an extension of Ford Road. Does that, does that answer your question?
I think it does, you know, and because, and I, you know, I think a lot about Ford Road. And I've been thinking a lot about Ford Road most of my life, but particularly since being elected in 2016. And, you know, we saw it when we did the Cobalt study and looked at the trips people in Canton Township take, where they go. And you can really quickly understand why. And it's because we intentionally kept shopping on Ford Road and did not necessarily have any type of neighborhood shopping. It necessitates people leaving their house, getting in their vehicle, and driving to Ford Road. And I, that's my lived experience on a regular basis. If I need to pick up something, I typically have to go to Ford Road, which then creates that density. And so I see the nodes as a great way to relieve stress on Ford Road and reduce auto trips as well, especially if people can walk to those nodes. My only other concern would be because we are so intentional about the large town square development in Cherry Hill, are we concerned that nodes might pull individuals out of the Cherry Hill Village Town Square? Has that come up at all as any concern that we are potentially creating more competition for a pretty large public project that we've put a lot of time and energy and money into?
Yeah, someone else has brought that up at the Planning Commission level. And, you know, in our discussions, we don't see as them being anything in competition with each other. Cherry Hill Village is unique. It's an entity unto itself. And we're not attempting to recreate or extend the Cherry Hill Village neo-traditional neighborhood enclave that it is. It's wonderful, and we want that to be what it is. These neighborhood nodes are intended to be kind of a microcosm of that, in a sense, where you have the residential, but then you also have some, you have the commercial, but you also have some residential on top of it. So, or behind it, as you'd see in the concept. So we have these located in areas where they're not going to be in direct competition with Cherry Hill Village. They're not going to take any of the commercial or the residential investment that would be going into Cherry Hill Village.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful answers.
Thanks, Erin. And on top of that, I just want to kind of expound on that. So as you said, you know, we have nodes all through Canton. As actually Mr. Castillo also said, another successful one is on Warren and Sheldon there, was some of the restaurants in the neighborhood. So we do have them. So you talk about 1,000 feet on each intersection. So it would be, if you're like at Ford and Beck, it'd be 1,000 feet to the west, 1,000 feet to the east. And as you also said, though, the master plan is a guiding document. We're looking at doing an ordinance. But I also want to state that we are looking at it legally also, correct? Because, you know, I know this deputy supervisor is working with our legal team to determine if that's a possibility. Because even though we write an ordinance, as we found out, we want to make sure it's, it can be held up, correct?
Of course, of course.
So I don't know, deputy supervisor, if you want to kind of talk a little bit about it? We're looking at, I mean, we're looking at the legality of something like this. That's actually what Mr. Castillo is also, he came to here, but he's also been, you know, spoke to me also saying, you know, check the legality of, that we can actually say to this node, this is the node, you can't go any farther, can't have runaway development.
We're researching the legal issue, and we'll produce a memo on it. And then the memo will be forwarded to the Board.
Yep, and that'll be before the 63 days also. So we'll have some idea of that also.
And throughout this process, these 63 days, if there are concerns related to the nodes, either their location or the 1,000-foot barrier or things of that nature, these are some things that can still be tweaked during this process. This is the opportunity to hear from every member of the community and, as well as the Board, and making sure that we have something that everybody can, is defensible for everybody and making sure it's something that we all want to aspire to. So there's still some opportunity for some modifications.
Could you expand a little bit about some of the things you said will be spun off from this also? It's like economic development plan, housing, transportation. How will that happen through this process?
Well, once the master plan is adopted, we're already looking at our implementation strategy, which is included in the draft text and the goals and objectives and how we're going to implement and how we are going to have this master plan as the guidepost. So how are we going to make this come to fruition? And so a couple of these things is, we recognize that environmental sustainability, housing, transit, especially with the potential legislation that's going to the governor's desk related to regional transit. These are things that we want to study here in the community. We think are very important. However, to get into the details and to get into all of the multifaceted components of it could really delay the master plan being adopted. I mean, it could take another year or two before we get all the details of sustainability for a tree program, for transit and everything else. So what happens is we take these, some of these broader ideas and say, we want to study housing in more depth. You know, we want to allow for there to be more housing types in the community, we want to pursue attainable housing. Okay, well, how do we do that? Well, we create a housing plan that will give us a little bit more detailed steps on how we can attain that, as opposed to just saying, we want to do it. This will give us the actual steps on how to take care of that. Same thing with transit. We look at, we want to make sure that it's accessible for everybody. Well, that's a very broad goal, and it's a wonderful goal to have, which we have. But how are we going to attain that? And so having something that's a little bit more defined as a specialty plan will give us that foundation and give us those tools to move forward with it. There's also a lot of grant opportunities for grant funding through, for some of these planning initiatives. So by including it in the master plan of saying, we want to study this topic in more detail, it also gives us the foundation to pursue those grant funds.
Because we have a master plan, we can say, here's our master plan, and that helps give us a leg up.
And these are the priorities as reflected by all of the input that we receive from the public. The public wants this. We did the master plan. Now we're going to do this. Please help us do that.
Questions or comments or? All right, we have a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So now we'll go back to our floating topic of the Youth Advisory Committee Delegate's Oath of Office. Clerk Segras?
All right, we're just going to do two quick swearing-ins for our two new members. You want to come join me first?
Put your hand on your hip.
Simon says, all right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Wudum Rai Salamah, swear.
I, Wudum Rai Salamah.
Advisory Council Member, Charter Township of Canton. It's round.
I'm going to take a picture after you finish. Of course, you're taking pictures now. It's okay.
All right, congratulations. I've done so many police and fire that I have that all memorized in my head. They don't have badges, so I can't do that. You guys want to come up here in front of them?
Congratulations.
Come on, Borg, squish in, squish in. Squish in, Borg. Come on up too. Here, Emma, would you mind taking the pictures? Yes.
You're in the photo.
Oh, there we go. Camera. Guys, can you get us all in? Should we shut? Turn, turn. Hands on your hips.
Oh, I actually did it.
Me too. Thanks, Emma.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations so much, yes.
Thank you.
You can have your own copy. I'll have to make copies after. Get them to you somehow.
Thank you. Now, are they staying here or?
They're members of our.
Oh, okay, okay. Great, thank you, congratulations. All right.
You too.
Come on, come on. Now we move on to G2. Consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the power unit on the admin freight elevator.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and a purchase order
Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G3, consider approval of application from MLCC special liquor licenses.
I'm going to take a minute. Motion, I don't like.
For this one? Or the previous?
Yeah, it doesn't list the events. It says in the background, I don't.
Ah.
Can't get into the. Yeah, but it won't get, it's on the motion, which is.
I'm going to copy and paste it.
Special record of what occurs, I want to make sure it gets in there. Yeah, but I can't, when I'm in the minutes module.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yeah.
Some of it's chopped off in my module.
Breaking the fourth wall here, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, all right. Got those events, let me copy and paste them. Get your head.
Right. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at the following events, the events listed, and to approve the attached resolution.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In 2025, nine fundraising events are planned to be held in conjunction with Canton Leisure Services at various township facilities that will require application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for special liquor licenses. Lead Like a Girl fundraiser, January 25, 2025. 32nd Annual Liberty Fest, June 12 through 14, 2025. Thursday Night Live concerts, June 26 through August 14, 2025. Concert and Cuisine, July 9, 16, 23, 30, 2025. 11th Annual Rally on the Ridge, July 25, 2025. 15th Annual Brew, Brats &amp; Ban, September 13. Arttoberfest, September 27. Winter Wonderland Walk, December 4, and Christmas in the Village, December 6. Community Development is requesting the Township Board approve, to apply, approval to apply to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol at these fundraisers. No penalty or additional expenses will be incurred should the event be canceled. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
Just that, obviously, we recognize a lot of these events as some of our favorites here in the community, but each and every one of these events benefit one of our local partner groups, so these are all nonprofits, and a lot of this money goes right back into the programs throughout the community. So otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Looking for the resolution.
And you mean, in your view? It's kind of cut off.
Motion, but it says there's an attached resolution?
Yeah, we can see it. It's titled MLCC.
Okay. In the future, if we could put that in the model resolution portion of the RBA, that might be better. Where? How are you getting that? Where is that? Yeah.
I think they're in the board view. Did you want to read that for the redo room?
No, but I just, I need it in the minutes, and if it's not in the, if it's not.
Just to clarify, so you would like the model resolution listed in the motion within the RBA?
Yeah, like, yeah, like a formal resolution.
You can read it, read it with the motion, correct?
Well, if I say, like, the attached resolution, then the resolution is in the model resolution, then for the minutes, then the language of the resolution makes its way into the minutes, which is the log.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and essentially, the retention on the minutes is forever, and the retention on our, on board packets is, like, 30 days. So if we reference things in a board packet, but they don't make them into the minutes, then they get destroyed, and then we, we have record that we approved a resolution, we'll never have the resolution, and it becomes legally, just a weird thing for me. I'll figure it out tomorrow. Okay.
I don't see it either. Where are you seeing it, Summer? Where are you, in your packet?
If you, if you click on the item under agendas, then it, yeah, I think it is, too.
Okay. Download it.
Oh. I found it.
Found it?
I downloaded it as an attachment, but.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is G4. Consider extending the scope of work for Fishbeck, Thompson, Carr, and Huber Incorporated to perform environmental assessment.
purchase order not to exceed $20,000, and the related budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Broninski. Canton Township is in the process of constructing Fire Station Number Four. Funding for this project is being provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and therefore requires an environmental review of the property. Requests for proposals were issued in August, and the board approved the recommended vendor Fishbeck, Thompson, Carr, and Huber Incorporated. The department is requesting to increase the scope of work to also include the parcel of land to the west of the location, to ascertain the presence of additional wetlands in the adjacent property. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in motion of the favor, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Consider an appointment and four reappointments to the Tax Board of Review.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the reappointments of Elizabeth Manuel, Ethan Petzold, Hussein Malad, and Sayed Jaffrey, as well as the appointment of Susan Kopinsky to the Canton Tax Board of Review for two-year terms to expire on 12/31/2026.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Lisa Manuel, Ethan Petzold, Hussein Malad, and Said Jaffrey, who have served as members of Canton's Tax Board of Review, are seeking reappointment following the expirations of their terms at the end of 2024. Canton's assessing department works directly with the Board of Review and reports that all four of these members have provided excellent service and good attendance. Additionally, there is one further vacancy on the Tax Board of Review. After interviewing several candidates, the Board and Commission's Interview Committee believes Susan Kopinsky is the best candidate to fill that vacancy. So are there any comments or questions from the board? Kopinsky, I know we, sorry, go ahead.
I will just note that Trustee Broninski and I did interviews for Tax Board of Review, and are happy to recommend the candidates that are, that are being reappointed and appointed.
Yeah, I agree with Trustee Foster's comments, and I'm also very excited that Susan Kopinsky's joining. She has a lot of energy, and I think she will be an asset to the Tax Board of Review.
Are you Ms. Kopinsky? Okay, okay, I didn't know if Ms. Kopinsky was in the audience, okay. Oh, there you go, you know her. It's a proxy. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we are at the point for additional public comments for three minutes. If anybody would like, in the audience would like to make an additional public comment for three minutes at the podium, please state your name and where you live. Thank you.
Christine Wafrid, Canton, Michigan, and I'm with Chuck Lawson, who's on the HOA Committee. There's two issues here, and I have two handouts of this. We have an issue at 44131 Applewood, and thanks to Emma for assisting and trying to resolve this. He has had a big trailer parked in his driveway, I would say since May or June, and it's still there. And he got some permits in September, and in October 29, he filed for a permit to do some work on his garage. I don't see why this truck has to be parked in the driveway when he's not doing any work. So he gets to keep it there for six months, and then maybe get another permit for six months after that. So I'd like the building department and ordinance to take another look at this situation. It's very upsetting that he gets to do this. We don't even know if anybody is living there, we don't see any activity there. The other issue I have is, and I'm not sure, I don't have the exact address, but we have a car. It's an old, beat-up station wagon, and it's parked in the eastman of the driveway, and it's parked sideways, and I don't know if that's allowed or not. So I have two issues that I would like for Canton to really take a look at, and, but this for having, you know, we've been having to look at this monster of a truck since May of last year, this contractor trailer, and I just don't think it's right. I think if he's going to do work on his garage, fine, but let him park it there when he's doing his work. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity, and I've got handouts, I've got two handouts of each, and I don't know who you would like for me to give them to.
Thank you, we can take them. Clerk Seeger, swell, and then Chief Chad Baugh will take a look also for ordinance.
Oh, I forgot to congratulate Michael on making the, what is it, the Wayne County Election Board, something?
Yeah.
And I did work on the elections with Michael, and Kate, and I would like to compliment them as well. They did a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Okay.
No, okay. Public comments are closed. Now we will go with, we'll start with admin comments. Anything back there? Here, Chief Chad? Patrick? Emma? Rochelle? Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to serve the employees and also the residents of Canton in this new capacity, and we look forward to a great year in HR for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lefever? No, I'm getting a lot of cheap, no? Director, no? Deputy, no? Nothing? Okay, all right, well, we'll start on this end. Let's go to the board comments. Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the weather is getting really cold, and we have this warming center, like Summit and the library, and people make use of that, and this is like, this is also a very big week for the harvest, different harvest festivals in different parts of India where people are celebrating with different harvest-related festivals, so I wanted to wish everyone a happy San Kranti for that.
Thank you. Summer?
That's a really good point, Tanya, about the warming centers. I hear it's supposed to be super cold next week, so everyone should be careful. This is our first official, our first board meeting, we had a study session, but our first board meeting of the new year, so I just want to wish everyone a happy new year, and to thank Emma for this fancy resident service advocate annual report.
Thank you. Amara?
Yeah, it's going to be really cold, but I'm also really excited to be able to go into this next year, just taking my time to learn from all of you. I really appreciate that every time I've called or emailed, everyone's been responsive and just very open, and that makes it easier for me to learn and to serve Canton residents, especially as someone who's new here, so thank you for that. And I was beyond nerding out about this master plan, like, I've been hearing about it forever, and then to actually be sitting in this seat and just be like, yeah, we can distribute it to the public now, it's very cool and surreal, and I feel very honored to be now a part of this process, so thank you for allowing me to do that. Yeah, really looking forward to what this year brings us.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, Happy New Year, stay warm, and little side note, my daughter told me last night that today is National Dress Up Your Pet Day, so if anybody did it, I would love to see the photos.
That's a good idea. Again.
Happy New Year, I'm looking forward to a great year with everybody, and remember there is warming centers, and remember to keep your pets inside.
Thank you. So this weekend is Martin Luther King Weekend on Monday, so there's several events that are going on, and we put out some recommendations in the focus, but there's going to be a peace parade for youth over in the library on Saturday from 12:30 to 2:30. There's also some things we're going to be putting on cable TV that you can watch, but this is a good time. There's also going to be a changing of the president this weekend, so that's, the inauguration's going to be on Monday, that's another thing community members can watch, but Martin Luther King Day is a big celebration and a day of service, a lot of days of service some of our organizations are holding. Michael? I'm sorry. He's burning a hole in my head.
I know, I was going to pass.
No. Happy Martin Luther King Day.
Well, yes, obviously, Happy Martin Luther King Day. I'm not going to echo anything, because it gets a lot of echoes sometimes in this room, but I will say, Lions had a bye last weekend, so I'm really excited for this weekend. Yeah, most definitely. One of, kind of the most important thing going on in my life right now, so super geeked about that, so let's go Lions this weekend.
Thank you. Actually, and speaking of Michael, speaking of Michael, you just got elected to something, you want to talk about it?
Oh, sure, yes. I am, I was recently re-elected president of the Association of Wayne County Clerks, and I joined that board, I think, my second year in office, so 2017, as treasurer. What I didn't realize is, because I was so inexperienced and had no idea, I volunteered to do it, and everybody was excited, because nobody wants to do treasurer of any of these nonprofit boards. But I served as treasurer until 2023, and, yeah, I got elected president, and now I'm on my second, my second term on the association board, and it's pretty cool, it's a great group, great group, you know, there's 43 counties in Wayne County, and, you know, we represent all of them and do what we can, so honored to do it. He's burning a hole in my head.
I know. I was going to pass.
No. Happy Martin Luther King Day.
Well, yes, obviously, Happy Martin Luther King Day. I'm not going to echo anything because it gets a lot of echoes sometimes in this, in this room, but I will say the Lions had a bye last weekend, so I'm really excited for this weekend. Yeah, most definitely. One of, kind of the most important thing going on in my life right now, so super geeked about that. So let's go Lions this, this weekend.
Thank you. Actually, and speaking of Michael, speaking of Michael, you just got elected to something. You want to talk about it?
Oh, sure, yes. I am, I was recently reelected president of the Association of Wayne County Clerks, and I joined that board, I think, my second year in office, so 2017 as treasurer. What I didn't realize is, because I was so inexperienced and had no idea, I volunteered to do it, and everybody was excited because nobody wants to do a treasurer of any of these nonprofit boards. But I served as treasurer until 2023, and yeah, I got elected president, and now I'm on my second, my second term on the Association Board, and it's pretty cool. It's a great group, great group. You know, there's 43 counties in, in Wayne County, and, you know, we represent all of them and do what we can, so honored to do it. Oh, how'd you hear about that? Oh, yeah. I haven't said that publicly yet because I wanted to put some distance between getting elected president of the Association, but I just got certified as a master municipal clerk, which is, which is pretty cool, so I'm pretty geeked about that. It's like, I was a certified municipal clerk, and then, that was like five years ago, and then now I'm a master municipal clerk, which means a lot if you're like a clerk, if you know, if you're like in the clerking business. If you're not in the clerking business, you're like, okay, I don't know what that means, but it's not easy, so I'm pretty, pretty excited about that, too. Yeah, lots of.
Tell us what it means.
What's that?
Can you tell us what it means?
What does it mean?
It means I had to spend hours in like educational settings and doing like projects and tracking the amount of time and energy I was doing, that kind of stuff, and I had to submit it to like the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and they had to get approved that like I actually did all of that stuff, so you get little points, little points for being president of the Association of Wayne County Clerks or on the board of the State Association, and you accumulate, I think it's 60 educational points, which is hard because like an educational point is six hours of education, and then you have to do 40 professional points, which are a lot as well, which is why I got my CMC within like three years of being clerk, and then it took me like an additional five to six years to get my masters, but yeah, pretty cool.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I forgot one thing. We did get an email from Will Hayes, so we did, Will Hayes was part of a group that the Moving Forward Coalition, besides talking about snow, and specifically the Michigan State team was contacted by McKnight's Long Term Care News, a national publication about what we're doing in the state of Michigan around the National Academy's Science, Engineering, and Medicine Report, the Quality of Care in Nursing Homes, National Academy. They had, he held a tabletop at some of the nursing homes with the date adjacent cities and townships, and basically what they did is they went into the nursing homes and they talked about what they would do in an emergency. So the article, Training Together to Reshape LTC, reports, highlights these efforts, which Region Two South Healthcare Coalition is trying to replicate in our region. So we basically created a model, and now across the state, they're asking us to replicate it and nationally, so kudos to our, our emergency management team. And then also, we have, we've scheduled a project for an ADA kayak launch coming up also, so we're going to be having that this year, as well as a ceremony for the new 27 acres that we have received on the, near Michigan Avenue. So a lot of events coming up. All right, time to leave, time to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Needing adjourn. Thank you.